This conference will now be recorded.
The time being four forty six P M. I'd like to call the meeting of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is to review and approve the minutes of twelve one. A question for the other. I'll let the public know that two of our select board members are out ill this evening. Question. Do you think we should just table these for the next one?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to table the minutes from twelve one twenty-two to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a two hundred dollar donation from Pat Constantino and Kim Souls for the Christmas activities in Tilton.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very big, a big thank you to Selectman Constantino and Town of Tax Collector Souls for their donation to the Christmas activities in Tilton. We'll now move into our non-public session. The time being four forty eight P M. Yep.
Before you move into non-public something, Kevin, do you want to talk to the board about the air compressor?
Oh, sure.
Before we talk to non-public.
Yeah. Let's handle air compressors.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
I've been waiting for air compressor discussion the whole day.
I woke up today saying, you know what? I feel like talking about air compressors.
And then you put that shirt on.
Perfect.
This is good.
So every year we have a pressurized tank inspection at the D P W. And this year, the inspector noted that the unit was thirty years old and that the tank, the pressurized unit itself was showing some signs of fatigue. That this was basically the last year that he would put a sticker on it. That with some operating lax that I've noticed over the last few months where it's taking longer to build air and the electric motor is bogging down and it's time to change it to get a new one. I spoke with Tim to see if we had some funds available for that. I got him three quotes. They're all within a couple hundred dollars of each other as far as the quotes. Comparing apples to apples. It's basically an eighty gallon tank that produces twenty-four CFMs. And it's what is basically replacing what we have now. That compressor we have now is adequate for what we use it for. So there was no need to go any bigger. Definitely don't want to go any smaller. The cost to replace that unit is anywhere from thirty-four to thirty-six hundred dollars, depending on which quote you go with. Now, the the interesting factors are it's the exact same Ingersoll Rand compressor being sold in three different locations. So we could just go with the lowest price. And I know I'm getting the best product because it's the same regardless of the cost. And Ingersoll Rand, just to give you a little history, was the producer of the air compressor I used when I was drilling water on the droves. So I'm very familiar with their longevity and their ability to just keep working. So I'd like the board's permission to purchase a new air compressor.
This year.
This year.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Approximate cost?
Thirty-five hundred.
Mr. Byron, any questions? Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I do have the spec sheets if anybody is interested in those as far as electricity and wattage and all that stuff. But I'm sure it's probably a little more efficient than thirty euro. Yeah, that's what. Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to note that Selectman Constantino is with us.
Okay, okay.
And she'll be calling in to my phone.
When we go into non-public. Okay. So now, the time being four fifty-two P M. I make a motion to enter into non-public session. Per RSA ninety-one A three-two A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee for the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges him or her unless the employee affected one has the right to a public meeting and two, request that the meeting be open in which case the request shall be granted. And RSA ninety-one A three-two B, the hiring of any person as a non-public employee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote. Ruggles, yes.
Byron, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
We are now now in non-public session. All opposed, motion passes.
Right.
Good.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy us now.
Yeah.
We did get that out.
They got the top.
Yeah, they're good. When I did get that on Facebook, it's with the genie and you know, so.
And I'll make a.
And I'll put an alert out and we'll be good. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You guys have a good night. Drive safe.
Thank you, Elche Bay.
Thanks.
It goes with the shirt.
There's not much else that goes with that shirt.
Wine green for ants. I'm just saying.
And a wine green mask.
Yeah.
With a frown.
There we go.
I could see it.
I could see it too.
Next appearance.
Next appearance.
Could have been right here.
Could have been. Could be next Thursday.
Give you a Nehru jacket.
Oh. I'm gonna turn the sign around before I open them.
Okay. You got a minute, so hustle.
What are you doing?
Okay.
We did that for Christmas with my kids. Excuse my dad. Made him worry at the church.
The time being six P M. I'd like to open the public hearing to discuss the draft hazard mitigation plan for the town of Tilton. Notice for this public hearing was posted in the December eighth edition of La Conia Daily Sun. It was also posted on our website and at the kiosk at Town Hall. Tilton staff members and various committee chairs worked on this update with the Lakes Region Planning Commission. And we'd like to thank them for their hours they put into updating the document. While not required by law, the selectmen wanted to get public input on the draft document. The draft document is available on our website. Ensuring opportunities for public input is an important element of the process. It is also another opportunity for local officials and the public to become aware of the plan, the process, and the recommendations. And it is the town's and it is the town's plan. Once input is received, one, any associated edits will be incorporated into the plan by L R P C. Two, the plan will be submitted to the New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management, N H H S E M, for their review. Once N H H S E M grants approval, they occasionally require some revisions. It will come back to the Board of Selectmen for local adoption. And four, N H H S E M has a review window of up to ninety days. Is there any input from the select board members?
Those, I'm not sure. I didn't see it in there. You were involved, right? See, probably. No, I'm good. Is there anything regarding like the natural gas plant on one forty?
No, that does not ring a bell to me.
Because I think that's, I'm not sure exactly.
Is that in Tilton?
Yeah. And that's where all the, from what I understand, the main line comes in.
Did you get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I went through it. I didn't see it.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell.
So. I don't know if that requires anything, you know, if they had a gas leak there and how they would.
All right, that's a good question and I can ask.
And the other one was, I know, like three M and they handle chemicals that come in by railcar or tanker car. I don't know if any possible railroad accidents, chemical spills. And then I think there's a couple of oil companies in La Conia and other companies that get chemicals and fuel oils delivered by rail.
And I don't remember.
I've never seen them go past three M with tankers.
You see them in there?
No, I've never seen them go past three M.
Yeah, they have, they used to. But I do, seeing as I can see on my bedroom windows, train cars go by and they bring some tanker cars to there.
You can get several questions to ask.
Just in case something.
So they do have listed the state and the answer for railroad, which is important infrastructure.
Okay. Anything else from select board?
That's it for me.
Sure. So I'll open it up for public input. Anyone online have input on the hazard mitigation plan? Okay. So, hearing none, we are not required to have any specific amount of time to open. So if there's nothing else from the select board, from public, online, or in person, we're going to close the meeting. So the time being six oh four and seeing no other questions, I'll close the public hearing on review of the hazard mitigation plan update for two thousand and twenty-two.
I will check on those two items.
Super. Thank you.
In the process, did I miss you talking about what so everybody knew the process was going over?
I did. I did. The once input received. That was, no, that's okay. It was points one, two, three, four. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies.
We should prize this.
I did want to mention that there's a list of people who worked on this and Jane Alden was one of the individuals who was part of who that worked on this and she could not be here.
Okay.
Send her on the press.
Excellent.
Do you have a list of those?
Yes, it's on the front page.
Yeah.
If we can read them off.
It's right on the, if you look at the report.
Is it the, under the, for the?
So it's on the past executive summary. And under the acknowledgement on page three.
Got it. So we will, we'd like to acknowledge the following for being hands-on in terms of assisting in the development of this plan. Jeannie Forrester, Tilton Town Administrator, Chief Abe Gilman, Tilton Police Department, former Chief Corey Peiser, Kevin Duval, Tilton D P W Director, Jane Alton, who was on the Tilton Planning Board and Senior Center, Bill Lawrence from the Tilton Budget Committee and Town Business Owner, Tim Juveire, former Deputy Chief of the Tilton Fire Department, Kevin La Chapelle, Tilton Interim Emergency Management Deputy Coordinator. I don't know what the D stands for.
Emergency Management Director.
Emergency Management Director, excuse me. Leanne Moynahan, the Tilton Land Use Coordinator. So, and then we have Julia Chase from the Bellknap County Field Rep, Kayla Henderson, the Planner for New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and David Jeffers, the Regional Planner for Lakes Region Planning Commission. I'd like to thank all those folks for their extensive work on this plan. It is a very extensive plan. If you have questions about it and are watching the meeting, please don't hesitate to go to the website where the draft is posted.
Tim, now, right?
Yes, we are. Second night in a row with a breakdown from Tim. Last night, I was here last night with him, Budget Committee.
I was not.
Oh, I know that.
I was styling in the shirt at my company Christmas party.
So you wanted two days in line.
Really?
He's got, he's got an undershirt.
I got undershirt.
That's there. Thanks, Matt. Okay, he's satisfied. I can't, actually, Eric, what I expected to say is I bought five of them because I love them. So good, so, so.
Well, I'm eyeing some for next year already.
What do we got? What are we going, Easter, Valentine's?
Well, they have Valentine's Day one, they have St. Patrick's Day one.
If you want it, I'm just saying, I know there's a cookie contest, but there could be an ugly sweater contest.
It's not a sweater. It is as warm as a sweater.
I'd be willing to, you know, be the judge.
The ugly sweater I have is not appropriate to here to court meeting. We'll just tell you that right now.
Those are always fun.
Come on.
No, I, oh, I love mine, but I'm not like.
I had a nice dinner last night.
Okay, stop.
Barrel. Is that a five-hour meeting? I want to open bar. I only have three here.
Oh.
There was this being.
Hello, Mr. Wilson. There was this being. We're done. Public hearing is over. That's why you're, we're now in your public.
Four minutes longer than we anticipated to be. You have a record to beat. Four minutes. Let's see.
I'm not gonna beat that, but so before I begin, I just want to let you know that our, one of our large mortgage processors came through today. Over a million dollars.
You're like.
A little bit of breathing room, so that's good. Good news. What's that?
Is it digital thing you sneak in?
Yeah, well, it's gotta be received by the tax collector.
Bricks pulled up.
Yeah.
Bitcoin.
But in any case, yeah, that was very nice to see. And there are three things to be signed in sign now. One of which is the manifest, but there's a letter instructing the trustees to reimburse for R and D paving for the service work. That's not in the, in the to be signed.
I thought we did know it already.
This is a second one. It's the check that's in the manifest, eleven thousand, what, three eighty-five, I think. That was for service work pertaining to the paving. So it came after the fact, but I think it was something to do with manhole covers.
Yeah.
Yeah, things like that. But okay, so there are those. And then also for I M C, I sent out the email on the eighth and it was basically a new end user agreement for them. So let's see, where to begin? All right, so in your packets, you should have an updated budget dated twelve fifteen. And so this budget reflects probably the major changes in here are the addition of two full-time employees in Public Works budgeted for C D L as well as the transfer station janitorial services. And the janitorial services in the administrative budget and police budget have been reduced to one dollar. So the net of this is that we've gone down about, let's say, about five or six thousand dollars from the last iteration and that's mine.
I think it hurts.
Oh, it is hurts. Okay. So we've gone down slightly from the last iteration. And, and as I said, this reflects those, those hires that you approved as well as the health insurance and everything else for them. So, so basically, we're bringing the janitorial services in-house in a rotation schedule. And that's noted in here throughout. Also, in your packets, you'll see a listing of areas of increase and areas of decrease. I went through these with the Budget Committee last night. And the only difference with the, for Selectman Ruggles, from what he had last night, was that the janitorial lines are now reflected as an area of decrease. So the, and I'll just bring you up to date a little bit on a couple of other, a couple of other items. The Budget Committee, we did do a presentation last night, went through these areas of increase and decrease, discussed the police and public works budgets. We're very pleased, I think, with those two budgets. There's some individual concerns about the merit, the amount of merit increase, whether that's too high or too low. So there's some discussion of that as well as salaries and equitable amounts.
Yeah, I can just ask.
Yeah.
On the merit increase, it's forty-one thirty, like two sixty-six.
Yep.
It says, we had merit rates.
Yeah.
For last year, right?
Right. So, so what's.
The numbers.
Yeah, so in the, in the, in the description line, if you recall, when, when the merits are actually paid, if we don't do a budget transfer from the merit line into the individual salary lines, it will skew the salaries. In other words, it'll look like we're overpaying people in the salary lines. So after the merits are determined, if you recall, I have you sign a budget transfer document. And that allocates those merit lines into, you know, retirement, taxes, salary lines, you know, throughout the budget. So, so basically what happens is this line goes down sometimes to nothing. And then the other lines, if you look at any of the salary lines by the end of the year, they'll be at a hundred percent. Otherwise, it'd be over a hundred percent. So, and that's, that's in all of these, in the administrative budget for merit, in the police budget for merit, and then also highway. The, the one change, we're actually going down in the administrative budget for merit and also in the highway budget for merit because we're going from four percent to three percent. But there is an increase in the police budget for merit because we're looking to add a lieutenant which would be eligible for merit.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So in total, basically, we're, there are about twenty people that are eligible for the merit. And in total, I think there's twenty-one thousand dollars of merit budget allocated across the budget in the different departments.
It's, we also had some bio P T O additional for.
Yep.
How does that affect the budget for, or the numbers?
So those.
We actually pay out more than
Right.
the budget on the payroll of that, but it's offset by other.
So those, those are gonna be, you'll see those in the compensated absences lines. So there's, there's one in each of the budgets. The, it is gonna be excessive this year because of whatever reason people, you know, certain people had not been able to take the time. And as you're aware, the, in certain circumstances, it would be more than what, you know, was normally permitted because of extenuating circumstances. So some of these lines are gonna be well overspent because we budget, typically, we look at what the history has been for the number of eligible people that there are that could buy out and then look at what we think is gonna happen. And it's, it's one of those, it's very difficult to predict because sometimes you think someone's gonna do a buyout and they end up taking their time. So we've had someone that every year buys out the maximum. This year, they didn't. You know, and then we've got other people that have never bought out before that are buying out. So, so it's just, it's, you know, it's really not very easy to predict as to, you know, how that's gonna look at the end of the year. You know, maybe there's a better way to do it, taking a certain percentage, but, but in general, it is not a, not a material item across the entire budget so that we always have been able to absorb, you know, the, the ups and downs of that. They haven't always equaled out. I'd say this year, we're gonna be in probably the worst shape with those, those budget lines than we have in years. But, but again, that's because of the circumstances of this past year. of this past year. The, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion. Um, you know, there's the, um, other towns have a much higher, um, compensation packages for employees. They have, some have COLAs, some have merits, uh, some have STEPS with, uh, COLAs, um, and we just have the merit. Um, and it's, it's something I think it, you know, the, the trade-off last night during the discussion seemed to be, uh, seemed to surround, um, you know, whether, uh, whether the townspeople can afford that. So I just, I just have to remind. My gosh. There's a pound of sugar sitting there.
If he drops it on the shirt, we'll never know.
That's, that's right. So in any event, uh, you know, and this, and this comes up each and every year, uh, there is some concern, I think, among the department heads, uh, you know, that they've worked very hard to try to keep their budgets, um, trim and manageable. Um, and, uh, um, you know, so, uh, and, and just the jan, the whole janitorial thing is just one example. No, thank you. Thanks. No, I'll, I'll definitely not finish in forty minutes if you give me that. Um, so in any event, uh, and I think the, I think overall, the meeting went very well, uh, but I have a feeling that sort of whole discussion may come up again. Uh, so, you know, just to keep that in mind. Um, we do seem to be much lower than, uh, other towns. Um, Camden, I think, uh, Deb had mentioned was looking at a.
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight percent.
Yeah.
Increase for employees.
Six plus step.
Yeah, which could equate to probably an overall, what, nine percent? Or so. So, so in any event, um, uh, other than that, the, the budget, uh, is pretty much the same. There've been a few tweaks here and there. Uh, I, uh, listed that out for the board in my email regarding, uh, the electricity. Um, we got our first bills for the LED lighting, uh, and, uh, not very easy to kind of make out because they're about eight pages of credits and then eight pages of charges. And so I had to list them all out individually to look at what the charges were to kind of get a real view. Uh, but I was, I was encouraged and, uh, reduced that line that, uh, we had for street lighting by another six thousand dollars. I think it was six thousand dollars that I put in my email to you. Uh, the other thing is, as we, as we get close to the, the transition of, uh, doing away with the curbside collection of recycling, uh, I just thought I'd point out to you that, uh, I don't know if you, if you looked at the, uh, Pennard, um, invoice tonight, but our recycling disposal was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents a ton. So even, even at our increased, uh, rate through Wheel Abraider, um, you know, this, this is supporting the decision to make this change at this time. So just as you run across, uh, run across citizens that may be concerned with, uh, you know, why we're doing this, but it, it, uh, it certainly would have been more burdensome to continue on the way we were. Um, the, uh, the contract was reflected in this budget, uh, for the, the collection contract, the extension for Pennard and, uh, and then the other changes that you made, the land use technician rate, um, that was in, uh, included in here. And other than that, um, I really think that, that, um, you know, it's a pretty solid budget. If you look at the, the very cover page, we're really looking at a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase year to year, apples to apples. So that's taking out the encumbrances from twenty-one and not including any encumbrances from twenty-two and to twenty-three. So just looking at purely what the operating lines were budgeted at, uh, last year versus this year. So two point two percent increase. So does anybody have any specific questions on the budget? Would, do you want to go through any of the particular budget lines? It's, it is very possible that once we have some experience with the new electric distribution rates, that we may, um, you know, make some changes prior to, uh, town meeting or at-town meeting. You know, if it warrants that, now hopefully lower, um, you know, lower some of those electric lines.
I was gonna, this is actually not for you, Tim, but it's more general statement.
Sure.
I was gonna bring up in my, um, Selectman's report about the Budget Committee meeting last night. I don't know if they'll go any further, but I think the question, that they're questioning about the merit pay and where things stand and, um, you know, just some inklings from even previous meetings about, should we be at a step rate too? I mean, I think there's gonna be some of those questions that may come from budget just so that you can start, you know, thi- thinking about those things because it's, I have a feeling it will come from that body as well.
Well, and, and, uh, one of the people that was most vocal about it was, um, uh, was concerned that not everyone gets the same percentage, uh, so that, that, um, and which is by definition, the merit, you know, you, you have to earn it. So some people, if they, if they're not evaluated that way, um, but, uh, that person felt that it, uh, they'd be more in favor of a four percent if everybody got four percent. Those were her words exactly. So, uh, but at the same time, she also felt like, uh, well, we have some positions that are overpaid. So, uh, you know, well, how can you pay everyone four percent if you already think some people are overpaid? So it was a little, it was a little hard to follow and if I understood the conversation, uh, properly, but, um, but I meant.
I followed some of that.
Uh, right.
I don't have questions despite.
Yeah, he's been, he's been through this. Uh, the only, the only other things that came up, uh, which they've, uh, they've requested Jeannie to respond to is, um, regarding the, um, the issues that you're gonna be facing with Town Hall. So, uh, having to do with the Town Hall assessment, um, and there's forty-five thousand dollars budgeted in Town Hall Maintenance and Repairs, and then five thousand dollars budgeted for an, uh, ADA consultant. And, um, and, you know, until, and, and unfortunately, you know, all these things take a lot of time to gather information on, you know, if there was a set list of, you know, here's the menu of things that we want and this is what they're gonna cost, uh, it'd be great, but, um, that, you know, there's a lot of legwork that has to be done. And, and, um, and I, I know that Jeannie is, is, uh, you know, reviewing all that and working on that, but that was one of the questions they had. They are, they were also concerned with, um, spending money on, uh, or some were concerned with spending money on the sidewalk from Riverfront Park to Park Street. And just in general, you know, are we gonna have a continued amount of economic development money budgeted every year? You know, is this a recurring thing or is this a one-time thing? And, and, you know, the reality is that we need to have a recurring expense for this so that we can, you know, begin to generate, um, you know, generate the development and the excitement down there.
I think the, I think the understanding of the ADA, um, thing was, I think it was taken, they understood the situation in terms of having that, just an assault on the ADA stuff. So it was the other things that they were looking for clarification, a little more clarification.
Okay.
What, because I, I.
For the town, for the Town Hall, I think, excluded, I think their forty years.
The forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Just a little, maybe line item.
Maybe be helpful for, um, or to the Budget Committee, Town Hall Assessment, so they can see.
I think that would be very, I think that would be very helpful. And, cause I'll be, I mean, obviously I had seen it and, you know, the discussion about the roof and things like that. But I think clarification in terms of what could be the possible expenditures that are gonna be made in Town Hall would help them. So that'll just clear up the picture as to why that's there because I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that, that becomes a significant portion of the increase in terms of.
It does. Right. Of the seventy-four thousand dollar increase, fifty thousand of that is tied up, uh, or a good forty, forty-six thousand of it. Uh, normally we'd have about four thousand in Town Hall Maintenance and Repairs.
That'll, that'll definitely clear the picture when they see the pieces that we have to take a look at.
And, and, uh, I, I don't know if you've had an opportunity, uh, or maybe it's during, uh, Jeannie's, um, report, but, uh, once, once you determine what the encumbrances are for the town, certain Town Hall repairs, have you already reviewed this?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. So, so that'll have a bearing too, um, you know, on, on where we end up for the year. But we're still, uh, we're still looking very, very strong in terms of, um, you know, expenses, uh, coming in very low. And, uh, it just depends on how much money we encumber, um, and, um, but otherwise, I think we're gonna be pretty much nearly a one-for-one in terms of what we spent, uh, on reducing the tax rate. I think we should be replenishing into the, uh, reserve, un-reserved fund balance, you know, for year end. So, uh, other than that, it's really, um, it's a matter of, um, you know, at this point, I would say when you have a full board, I think we should start, uh, voting or, or if you, uh, want to meet individually with some of the other department heads, uh, to bring them in and review things. But, um, it's, it's a pretty, I think it's a, a very, uh, simple self-explanatory budget in many respects. One election during the year, you know, there's not a lot going on in terms of, um, uh, Public Works, um, road projects, you know, they, he's got his things set for next year. Uh, we've got the one election. Uh, we'll have some work going on here at Town Hall. This will all be hopefully done in January of this year or twenty-three. And, uh, um, and we're looking at a very modest increase in terms of, um, the budget from year to year.
Is the Grinch costume?
Uh, a number of Grinch costumes.
I think you should have a shirt budget.
Every holiday. Why not? I like, I, I'm, I'm, I might be able to get behind that idea, however, the Budget Committee is not. I guarantee that will.
Well, maybe we'll step up and get some sponsorships.
I'm not wearing Bath, Broke Shop on my back with big hearts and stuff for the Valentine Patriots. It's not going, it's not happening.
So other than that, um, uh, you know, as Joe would ask, you know, is there anywhere, you know, where we have a lot of fluffing here or anything? And they're really, um, outs, unless we are unable to hire, uh, and start spending the budgeted monies, um, for personnel, uh, it's, it is very tight. Um, we've been very conservative with the health plans. Um, you know, so, um, so I think it's a, I think it's a good budget overall. I really, uh, wish I had more to say about it. Uh, but, and I'm more than willing to go through any portion of it that you like, but we have been through it before, uh, a number of times. Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on your, uh, getting the money.
Oh, I know.
Was it?
I know.
Sort of like in Las Vegas, Melton, Melton rang.
Well, I, I can tell you that, um, that I had, I had the, uh, everything laid out by day. Um, and, you know, what we, what we could process per day sending out and what was coming in by day. So, um, uh, we got.
Thanks for.
Very tight there, uh, momentarily. But, but I could see where we were, um, you know, and fortunately, uh, not just the, um, not just the county, but also our bank. I talked to our banker and, uh, we had an opportunity there to, um, if we really needed, if we were really in a bind, we were able to, um, to roll that, uh, into a new tan. So, um, but, uh, it, it really isn't the proper way to do it. Um, but it was nice to know that, you know, we had a lot of support from the people we typically work with. Uh, the other thing I, I guess I should mention is, and you probably saw in the news that, um, the Fed raised rates half a percent for the seventh time this year. Uh, it's designed to, to curb the, the demand type inflation and, uh, while at the same time not throttle, you know, the, the economy into a recession. So thereby a soft landing, uh, if you will. So that remains to be seen, but, um, um, but there are lines in here that are, are more inflation-driven and, and, uh, um, you know, and we have been conservative in those lines. So, you know, we do, uh, you know, we've, we've anticipated higher rates for fuel, higher rates for energy, uh, over the course of the year. Um, and if it comes in better, great, but, uh, you know, it'd be bad if we got caught the other way around.
Seems like some of our, um, money spent to save money actually was well-spent, but you're not really seeing it because.
Not as much. Right.
It didn't give much of a ouch factor.
Right. Right.
Great. Thanks, Tim.
Well, thank you.
Are our tax, are receipts coming in on schedule or?
They are. I, I hadn't calculated the, uh, percent where we are, um, after the deposits today, but, um, but we have to get to seventy-five percent by the end of the month. And, um, I, I, if I had to guess, I'd say we're about, uh, somewhere between thirty-eight and forty-two percent right now. And, uh, that was a big shot in the arm today. Um, so, um, we're looking, I think we're looking pretty good.
Well.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, next up, we have the Selectman's Report. And, um, we'll start with Mr. Pirate.
What was I saying?
No.
Two weeks ago. So I hope everyone enjoyed the Christmas parade. It was a nice time. I wish we had a few more people at the end of the parade, but there was a big gap between the end of the parade and the fireworks and Santa, because there weren't as many people as there normally is. So it, a lot of people left before the fireworks, even though they shot the fireworks off a little earlier than scheduled. But other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Scanlon.
That's, uh, I'm good.
Wow.
Selectman Constantino is on.
Oh, Selectman Constantino.
I, I have a couple of questions on Jeannie's report when she gets there. I have nothing on my report right now. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So I do have a few things, um, and there are a few that are quite pertinent. Uh, so first one for all of the, um, citizens and residents of Tilton, um, a note, due to significant increases in solid waste disposal and recycling costs beginning January first, twenty-twenty-three, the town will no longer collect recyclable materials curbside. With this measure, the town will be saving ninety-three thousand dollars in the collection contract by eliminating curbside recycling collection, which helps offset a fifty thousand dollar increase in tipping fees. Please visit the town website, tiltonnh.org, and read the instructions to help you transition into the new program. Again, curbside recycling will cease on January first, twenty-twenty-three. Reminder that the winter parking ban is now in effect from November fifteenth to April fifteenth, from ten PM to six AM, no parking on any street. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. An additional note, um, from the, um, Tilton Police Department and the DPW, um, for starting, for, for this upcoming storm, starting this evening, uh, at midnight and going through Saturday at noon, there's an emergency parking ban. So again, there's an emergency parking ban from midnight to night Thursday through Saturday at noon because of the incoming storm. Reminder of not quite a serious note, but a very, we're very excited to, um, remind everyone that we will be having an open house on Thursday, December twenty-second, from five to six thirty PM, um, Selectman's Open House, and there'll be a judging of the Selectman's cookies. We now know the judges, and the judges will be, um, Police Chief Gilman, uh, Fred Caruso of ninety-four point one, and Adam Drapcho of Lake, uh, Laconia Daily, of the Laconia Daily Sun. Uh, we're very excited. Uh, we'd love to have people come out and, uh, taste the wares that we will put out and have a meet and greet with the Select Board.
Plus you will, I'm sorry, I didn't mention the drawing.
Pl- plus the drawing for the spot or find the Grinch or spot. Plus, the drawing for the spot or find the Grinch or spot the Grinch contest will also take place at that meeting. If you don't, uh, know about this contest, you can check, um, social media, the Tilton Town social media in terms of spotting the Grinch or even seeing the Grinch's picture on social media and then being able to submit, um, your sighting to, I believe it's Grinch@tiltonnh.org. Um, great, great competition and a lot of fun during the holiday season for, um, the young folks in town. And, I think I had one more. Ah, yes. Just a note that, uh, town hall will be closed at 12:00 noon on Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, Monday, December 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday. So town hall will be closed, closing at 12:00 noon on Friday, December 23rd, and closed on Monday, December 26th in observance of the Christ, Christmas holiday. And that's all I have.
A question.
Yes.
So, uh, for the whole board, relative to the change or the end of recycling in Tilton, curbside recycling, would the board like us to post a notice in the newspapers, maybe put the variable message board up for a week? We could post it at the DPW, um, maybe, well, I think it's on the website now, but, you know, other outlets, just to get people to be aware.
Yes, I, I think, my opinion as person, I think as many places as we can put it right now for the next few weeks are going to help the folks who may not watch this, may not see some of the things come out. So I would say yes.
I had a couple of questions. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask them now, but, um, with the new curbside collection in us bringing our recyclables down to the public works office, would those have to be, uh, separated? And is there anything that they won't take that they're currently taking? So what's the process?
So, uh, we are working on the details of that and, um, Panard is drawing, uh, and we're actually working on a draft document at this point.
Stop. So when it happens, we'll know.
Yes.
To be continued.
To be continued.
Excellent. So, um, next up is the town administration's report.
Okay, um, so, under my action items, the New Hampshire DOT, there is the availability of a grant to get a road audit for the town of Tilton, and I would like to submit an application for Main Street. A road safety audit will help us with other grant opportunities, uh, by providing critical information that helps solidify, strengthen other grants that we may write to help, um, uh, for pedestrian or traffic in the downtown. So, uh, would like your approval to go ahead and submit a application for that.
I mean, yes.
Yes. I'll say yes.
Pat, Selectman Constantino.
Okay. Um, the results are back from the Lawson Group regarding the ceiling above Gail's desk. Others, and any asbestos, there are significant levels of lead paint. Um, I attached the results in a, um, in the email that I sent you, and there should be a hard copy in your packet. They, I asked the question, could we have our guys suit up or what, what is the next step? And they said, um, they would recommend a lead abatement contract to be used, uh, and they provided some names. So my question to the board is, would you, uh, like me to pursue bids for removal of the lead paint? We cannot do anything, uh, repairs until, well, we can't do it. So they're recommending because of that nature of that. What's going on above? None of that, and this was the same group, you recall, that actually did an air quality study, and none of this was detected because this is below the drop ceiling. Um, so, right now, we're protected because there's, it's all above us, if you will. So once they go up there, they're going to start disturbing things, and, um, that will kick, kick up the hazard. So, I don't know, I have no idea what it will even cost for them to do it, but it's getting pricey.
So we could, we don't, they don't remove the paint, just all the debris would be disposed properly as a?
That's what they want.
Yeah.
Just wanted to get some pricing on that, I guess, that's, uh.
Yeah, I would say let's get some pricing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Selectman Constantino.
Did we already go over the New, New Hampshire DOT road audit?
Uh, we did, but we can go back if you had a question I had asked him. That point, no, it's fine. So what, what's your question, Selectman?
I have, I apologize. I, I must have been in my coughing fit here. Um, was that approved?
Yes.
Because I had a concern about that. We did a, um, a safety audit with Commissioner, I forget her name, Monahan or McCofflin or something, the woman. Uh, and she came, uh, about six or seven years ago, and they wanted to take away the two statues, well, the, the monument and then the statue in the front, the trough, and make a turn table, uh, uh, what do you call it, circle?
Roundabout.
Right, a roundabout there with a one inch diameter, which would take away, uh, walking from town hall over to the Cannon Bridge. And also they're extremely adamant about no, uh, crosswalk at T-Hop, which the Tilton School came down and asked us to fight for, because it's been in existence for over 40 years. I'm a hundred percent, uh, for any grant opportunities. So I just, can we do that, Genie, with caution? So that we don't, um, fall into a situation where they say, uh, because we had to fight against that roundabout with the, um, um, Commissioner herself, uh, the DOT Commissioner. I think you were here, Genie, actually. No? Okay, that might have been just before that, because we actually stood out there, um, and they wanted to do, uh, tractor trailer came by, and we stood where the roundabout would be, and they weren't going to be able to make that radius. And then they finally realized that maybe that might not be the case. Um, in coming down School Street and coming around, it would be difficult for any tractor trailers or anything with a trailer coming from it. So we kind of, one, because we happened to be out there talking about it, and there were a couple of scenarios where it, it kind of got pushed to the side because those scenarios would have, would have caused harm. And, um, but if you go for an audit and they look at downtown Main Street, those two issues are going to come up again because they come up every time. Just be careful. That's all.
So, just a question, are you saying that the road safety audit has already been done?
They, back in, um, uh, back at that time, we asked the DOT to come and look at a couple of different things, and I believe, if my memory serves me, which it doesn't always, um, it was in rela- relative to, uh, crosswalks, speed, and, uh, the, the, uh, lights, a turn, turns, uh, so that we could cross with a turn, you know, push the button and a blinking light would come. And it was in terms of that, but when, when they did that kind of analysis with Lambert and the DOT Commissioner came, came with them, and a lot of engineers, I mean, there was probably 15 people. And they, we all walked completely right down Main Street, excuse me. They determined through that, uh, we thought they would come back with, with, uh, a blinking light down by T-Hop and so on and so forth, but what they wanted to do was take away a couple of parking spaces down by, um, the Church Rescue Road, and they wanted to take away the parking space, the crosswalk at T-Hop, and they wanted to do this big, huge roundabout, which would remove the trough and the monument, the Veterans Monument. So the Veterans Monument could go in the middle of the roundabout, but they would have to move it. Big project.
That's what I'm trying on.
I don't know if they called it an audit. I think they called it more of an analysis. If you go back, I don't know if, uh, Bill Lambert is still there or not, but it was done by the woman that was the Commissioner at the time.
Selectman Scanlon.
So if I remember correctly, there was a thing going on across the state with all crosswalks, and they had to put a certain angle in to give all our crosswalks up. It, uh, went to the dimple so blind people could, um, feel them. And, um, some of them, they determined you had to have a certain space before and after the crosswalk in order to make it more visible. And that rearranged all of our parking downtown. And the one in T-Hop, we couldn't do because it wasn't something that did alignment, the spacing, the view, or, yeah. And we, um, we put that one in anyway, because of this, that's, remember, the big issue was with right around the time that they did all the, uh, auditing for any cap side walk.
Right.
So.
Oh, I'd like, like you to do it. I just think we should be cautiously approaching it, that's all.
Justin, I, and I understand what you're saying, but to be clear, I can't, I can't tell them, don't look at this and don't look at that. They're going to look at everything, right? I, I've been involved in one before where the company was looking at it, but it was very explicit. And then recommendations now, in particular, it's to where I was involved, it was not, so it is different. We were not held to having to do anything. Having said that, I know I've also had experience working with, they wanted to do certain things, uh, when their highway, but going through. And, uh, pushback from the, um, they, yeah, the community, uh, to 20 years. They, you know, anytime they are taking back an idea, even though it's their highway, they might, um, listen.
That's what we ran into, if I recall, before on the whole rotary and all that, is they had great plans and obviously it's not going to work.
I just, I just want to be clear that I, if I, if I, I ask them, I can't, well, and I can't, I'm not going to be able to direct them. I don't want to test. You know what I'm saying? You're going to look at.
And then it becomes our choices.
If you, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, Pat, that, that, you know, going, going through this and pursuing the grants, and when they do the audit, it basically becomes our choice as to whether we accept it or not.
Right, I was just going to ask that. If you're going to look for grant opportunities, at least we can go and look and see what, you know, what they recommend and what not recommend and what's available for grants. We can accept it or not accept it at the end, I think. It would be interesting to see what they come up with, um, because we've done, we have done some work down there already. Just let's, let's see what they come up with.
Good. That's the question. It might be a pursuit debt school.
Yes.
The next item was, uh, the Twin Rivers Cleaning Services contract based on your earlier, you know, the, the, the structure and the higher up. Having to advise. The new folks started, he's ready to go.
Did it require thirty Genos or anything?
Well, yes, of course, but, so it's not going to happen tomorrow.
Should we terminate the contract? I don't know if there's like, there's, um, about seven twenty-four.
Right.
Okay. Yes, I'll, it's, uh, yes, we'll take a motion.
That'd be nice.
Did you hear that, Pat?
No, I, I have a question about the Twin Rivers Cleaning Service contract. You know, so how does this affect, number one, um, you want the, you want the, uh, this to be turned over to highway and let the highway do that? And how are you going to diff, excuse me, differentiate each department? So how does that affect the senior center? Because the senior center has always been part of every contract. They've always donated their services. So how does this now affect the senior center in terms of, um, a contract with cleaning?
Well, I would, I would say that they donated their services, but the, it was built into every other cleaning, cleaning of that building. So, um, I, I don't know how, how it would affect you in any negative way, because it's a building that has to be cleaned. It's going to be cleaned just like every other building is going to be cleaned. And knowing our DPW director is going to have high standards and going to make sure that, I think, so.
What is the difference in the, if I may follow up, um, Mr. Chair? What is the difference in the savings are we going to have doing it in-house as opposed to having it contractual?
I don't have the contract in front of me, but I can tell you it's significant.
I can't, I couldn't hear you.
I said, I don't have a contract in front of me, um, but I can tell you it's significant. There was a, I mean, 40% increase in the services, um, when we came back with the new contract, and, uh, we went back to them and said, you know, what, what can be reached at, and they came back and changed a number of times, depending on the, um, we get, uh, increased down to fifteen percent.
Okay.
Whatever that number is, you, you know, you fired, you got two people, you fired, right?
But Pat, just as a, as a note, can you hear me? Pat?
Yes.
So ju- just for your reference, um, the de- the decrease, um, the current budget, that's the current budget, for town hall janitorial was $9,360. So that would come off. And then the, um, janitorial service for the PD was $18,753. And, and there's, and we know that there's an offset in terms of salary, but, um, if, if I remember, it was significant.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, I'll make a motion to, um, discontinue, to discontinue the services, um, the cleaning services with the Twin Rivers Cleaning Services, this is, uh, Twin Rivers Cleaning.
Got it.
Motion in the second. Hearing all those in favor of the motion, please hit the same.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm good.
Motion passes.
I sent you a copy of the Custodian Transfer Station Operator Job Description back on December 1st. Asked you to review it for discussion at this meeting, given the change, uh, of what has happened with the DPW Director and his, his proposal to go on a rotation. This, I think this job description is a moot point, or it doesn't, it needs to go away. Actually, all the other job descriptions now need to be updated to.
Actually, all the other job descriptions now need to be updated to add those duties. So that's nothing we need to do right now. Okay, parking in front of the eighteen seventy-five bin. Per NHMA, the town cannot give the bin exclusive rights to use town-owned parking spaces, especially when the town continues to expand, expend taxpayer dollars to maintain those spaces. If the town intended to give those spaces to a private entity, this needed to be voted the town. Patrons of the bin can continue to use the spaces, but they should be unrestricted parking spaces for the public use for whatever they wish. I did then have a selectman ask if the spaces could be leased or rented, and per NHMA, under RSA forty-one colon eleven dash A, the select board has authority to rent or lease property during periods not needed for public use, provided, however, that any rental or lease agreement for a period of more than one year shall not be valid unless ratified by the vote of the town. So, I think the fact that it is for public use would indicate to me that it can't be rented or leased. That's the way I understood it. So, I did have a conversation with the owner. And he was aware this was going to be discussed tonight, and he was invited to attend. Did, I mean, we had a good discussion, obviously there's frustration, and concern about the viability of his business with those spaces no longer available to him. In terms of options, I don't know if it's just taking down the signs. I, I don't know how you wanna proceed it. Obviously, he's, he is not excited about losing parking spaces. You discuss, there will maybe have to be a couple of these for that.
I have a question when, when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Konstantinou.
So, first of all, I'm very disappointed that this has come to this length, if you would, by, by a resident in the town of Tilton. So, having said that, and we have a ruling from the attorneys, do we also take away the dedicated parking spaces in the town that we have in municipal parking spots right now from other people? That's my other question.
What?
We have a dedicated parking space that has been for years and years and years in the T-Hop parking spot for an owner of a business at the T-Hop parking space that is dedicated just to that. And then we have six spaces dedicated to the fire district in a parking space that we lease. That is just dedicated solely to the, to the fire district, nobody else can park there. So what do we do in those kinds of situations now that we've opened up a can of worms in front of onions?
That's a good question.
I'm, I'm happy to go on. At this point, because, you know, my recommendation is, if the board, you know, if it was, it's actually cutting talent, because it works off.
I don't, I don't, don't mean to be, okay, you're cutting, cutting in and out, Jeannie, and I don't mean to be a stickler, but I'm sorry.
At this point, it makes very good points, is, you know, the way it's been done for a long, long time. I know this town is interested in helping businesses be viable. My only, my only thought at this point, presented to make, you know, go so far in terms of, you know, pointing out the law, but actually giving this need twice, that would be beyond their scope. And if the board wants, I'm happy to go to town and say, please, really, this office. Thank you.
Mr. Pyron?
Why don't we make a warrant article? The lease or, all these different spaces that were mentioned and, and do that.
And, and that's, that, that is what they say we can do, however, what it says is, like, we're not going to rent or lease property during periods not needed for public use. So all those spaces are needed for public use.
Yeah, it becomes, you know.
It becomes animal.
Yeah, because there's, there's not a time that they're technically not needed for public use, other than the, so, that becomes the. Yes, Mr. Scanlon?
I think it's probably very one of those things that the attorneys would figure, if look at, just for the economic fallout from that. We take away parking spaces that have been there for years and years, and they got permission to use those spaces and is operating their business based on the fact that they have them. They could default on their taxes and loans and all that, we'd end up with what is now being pretty much useless, as well as dumpster spaces in the end, as well as the fire department on having a place to park their cars. So, we can do it, if maybe there's some type of clauses, public uses, maybe understood as for the betterment of the public, you know, something like that. If there's other clauses, like grandfather clauses, whatever.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, selectmen Konstantinou?
We have the ability to, to the sale and lease of property that was voted on years ago in the town, years and years and years ago. Why can't we lease that property? I don't understand that. Year to year, we lease property from year to year in, for the municipal. Why can't we lease that property? What's the, what's the issue there?
Because it says, in the document, in, in my line, if you start that last part, it says, the, the sticking point seems to be not needed for public use. All those, you know, and we can.
But if the town is already gifted, if the town is already granted, the Board of Selectmen, the authority under RSA forty-one A, years ago in the, in the town meeting, to use our judgment in, for rent or lease, why wouldn't that apply here? That, that's the point I don't understand.
It, it, my, my thinking is, Pat, is that in, in RSA forty-one eleven A, as Jeannie outlined, the, the, I think the sticky point of the wording would be that rent or lease the property during periods not needed for public use. So, and, and I understand where you're coming from in terms of the, the power that the, the voting body may have given us, but.
Well, then I guess we better turn around and look at the other things that we've done for public use, because we just gave away spaces in the municipal parking that should have been for public use, but we didn't. We just gave away six spaces.
No, you're out of here, you're right, because I hadn't even thought about the other, the other lots and the other places. I would, I would hope, I would hope somewhere, and this isn't my commentary, this is where there's an easy way in terms of something having to do with a public service like fire, et cetera. Mr. Pyron?
Couldn't you designate it two spaces for emergency vehicles? The chief, the deputy chief, their vehicles?
They'll have to go there.
Except it's a fire district. It's a thing, it's a separate entity.
Yeah.
Plus I said.
Yeah, that's the sticky part.
But it could be a police car, private prop.
But it's still private prop, it's still public use. If you look at the term, what, what, what the attorney is trying to tell us, it's for, not needed for public use. And that's needed for public use. We need that parking for public use. So why are we designated it? And the other thing on the T-Hop side, we need, we need that for public use, but we designated that for the owner.
Well, we have four spaces parked out here for Town Hall use, did we take away that?
Well, no.
That's public.
That's public use.
During hours.
Yeah, it's during, it's during business hours. So, have, have the, I think, I think, I think the best thing is to have the attorney take a look and see, sort of, if, if there's any leeway in terms of variance.
I think, like to just lease it to them for a year and without the, you know, lease it to them for a year and then, and then renew it, like we do with the Sano property.
They'll look into it, lawyer will see, draw.
Yeah, let's, let's have the lawyer look into it and see if there's any, if there's any leeway. Because even, because even if we drew up a lease, Pat, which you're right, we have the right to do lease, but again, the, the sticky point becomes during periods not needed for public use, and you know, when is there a time from eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night that there's not a need for public use in downtown Tilton?
Right.
So that's, that's.
Right, but, but the other side of that coin is, we want to be proactive in economic development and bringing and supporting businesses downtown. And we need to figure something out, a resolve in this issue, because on the other side of that, down the other, the other end on the T-Hop parking is in the same situation now, where, where it's only one parking space, but this one up here is five or whatever. You're, you still want to promote businesses downtown, and I support it a hundred and fifty percent. We need to do that. And we have to find some type of a resolve. I think it's, you know, towing, take the towing sign off, whatever, but let Jeannie speak with the lawyer and see if we can find a resolve.
Okay. Good, I think we all agree on that, yes. Captain, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, that's the resolve.
So, next item, Town Hall, we're, we're here. The center gives out to this company, the Senate Board, who will take a look at, retention, and, 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 there's something that's been treated, all companies have it. The board needs to choose for this choice, because our plan is what we're going to come with the funds, so we need to collect.
Are we talking about the boiler?
No.
Roof, roof.
The roof, okay. I'm sorry, Jeannie, you cut out, cut out.
So there were, there was a quote from JMS Roofing. And theirs, their quote was, another was white energy stir PVC covering over the new roof, or black rubber. The price was the same, twenty-six thousand nine ninety-five. For the Melanson Company. There. Now, JMS Roofing and, and I continue here, that these were the original roofers for the town. The Melanson Company came back, there's a quote, replacement, hundred and thirty thousand to hundred and fifty thousand. Either one you choose, we have to do some work on the stairs so we can access the, the, we can access the roof.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
When we're looking at the wood, the, the roof repair, and we're looking at Melanson for three thousand versus a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty, are we looking, I should say, the other one's a metal roof, correct? Metal versus the rubber? JMS is metal?
Well, JMS, Melanson goes, Roofing, Melanson goes.
And then the Melanson is the, the rubber roof?
Either one of them, so we had asked for, if you remember, we started out, we were only able to get the one bid from Melanson. And I had asked the board, should we, should we go ahead and get the immediate work done just to get us through the winter, so we can take time to really look at this? And the board said, go and get more quotes. So, we were only able to get one other quote, and this was with JMS Roofing. And for them to do the short-term kind of patchwork to get us through until, to really look at this, theirs, theirs was.
Oh, I see.
Six thousand nine ninety-five, when their patching were, it was three thousand dollars for the Melanson. So, JMS was much higher when it came to the patching of the roof as compared to Melanson, but in the overall repair of the roof, Melanson came in much, much higher than JMS.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Are, are we looking to quickly repair it for the winter? Does it, is it in need of immediate repair? And if so, are we looking to put in a warrant article for the rest, to permanently fix it?
That's really a board decision.
Did you talk with the people, is it in immediate need of repair right now?
Yeah, so in the Town Hall assessment, they, they had said, that we should get, that a qualify, we should threaten the seams and single member, and we'll, we'll, we'll see many open joints according to the industry's technical requirements, just as a short-term fix it. And that, and then down the road, that it actually do a little bit. So, under the, under the, for maintenance, they talked about removing, replacing the roof drain plumbing in the attic, rebuild the top of the damaged chimney, install a new cap, install an overflow roof drain. So there are a lot, lot, a lot of other things in the long term. There was short-term, let's get this, let's get us through the winter. And then, and honestly, for me, I think, just like to get, try to get it fixed and get us through the winter and give us time.
Mr. Scanlon, your patient?
I was just gonna say, let's just get us through the winter and get it fixed in time. You know, I'm looking at these, the JMS, where they say, put in exposed fascia metal, that's a metal roof, like on the Senior Center, or shingles, or. I, that seems very inappropriate for a flat roof like that. So I, I think we really wanna invest in this properly and, and do it once the right way. But, let's get it inspected and patched as recommended, and do that. Did they go up there and actually, the one that bid the six thousand and take a look?
They looked in, yeah.
And they say that's what need for patching? And they're the original installers?
They're, they are the originals, that's what I understand. Now, this Melanson Group, if, if you looked, theirs had said recommendations. They're, they are the originals. That's what I understand. Now, this Melanson Group, if, if you looked, theirs had said recommendations, roof appears to be near at the end of its serviceable life and should be budgeted for replacement soon to help. In the meantime, we recommend having holes, patch repairs made. We recommend having it, well, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I remember reading.
That, so.
Good. See, I, that's, my thought is to go with that and, um.
Just, it just, yeah, I mean, B, you have to, when you look at the highlighted for the, the repair cost, just note that it's three thousand plus or minus. So, you know, when they get up, they, they, it could go up from through what, what the quote is. With the plus or minus. So, so just, 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 I'm just saying be aware of that if we're gonna go with it. So, yeah, because it could go plus three thousand.
So the encumbering funds, it may be, we may have to go back. If you approve encumbering, entering into it with Melanson, um, it may be, and maybe you want to pick a price up to six thousand dollars, up to five thousand. And then have them come back with the, the purchase order. Because that's what Tim says we need.
So, Chairman?
Yes.
So if we did the, what was the number you just said? Three thousand?
It says three, their, their quote, it says three thousand plus or minus on there.
So if we did it for, let's see, um, you know, four thousand and it was a little bit more, we could pay out of next year's funds or any overage.
Well, a- and also there's, there's, there is money in the, um, the maintenance line of town hall, the repairs, we've got that money in there too. So. Yeah, pull it out of there.
I, I think, um, if we did for four thousand. I, can they even do that? Snow on it in the winter? Because I think there's a temperature setting.
Yeah, it may be too late at this point. It may be a big point.
Well, it'll melt.
Yeah.
Right into here.
That's it.
I'll just shovel it down on the Jeannie and she's.
So, um, I guess that would have to be a motion to, to do that, um, to spend up to four thousand dollars to the Melanson, is it?
Melanson.
Melanson.
Melanson Company for repairs to the rubber membrane roof.
Ruggles, second. Motion and second discussion. Hearing none, always in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right. The next item is the, the board, uh, needs to decide whether they want to do a chimney repair or boiler replacement. And I gave you the bids for the chimney and the boiler. We, we had one come in just this afternoon and they put a copy on your Energy Unlimited LLC. This is for boiler.
I don't have a copy of that.
Yeah, I just, it just, just literally came in. So, so basically, Pat, it's, it's, uh, Energy Unlimited, heating and cooling, hot and tilted, new nature. It's the installation of new natural gas howl on a boiler. For twenty-eight thousand two hundred.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight thousand two hundred for boiler. This was, I talked to Kevin as, as these, all these contracts have come in, I've had him look at them. As the, you know, he's got some expertise. And, um, he recommended that with the quote from this business, he's had experience with them. He got quotes from Lakes Region Cooling, which I sent to you. He got one, Handman, age back, I think his was twenty-seven thousand. And, um, Lakes Region.
Jeannie, sorry to interrupt. Pat, if you took your text message, Eric scanned the document for Energy Unlimited. The quote that came in today to you.
In a text?
Yes.
Lakes Region, Lakes Region's quote for.
They're still sending.
Was thirty-eight thousand. So the range for boilers goes anywhere from twenty-seven PMN reach back to twenty-eight thousand two hundred from Energy Unlimited and Lakes Region Heating and Cooling for thirty-five. Those are the boilers. Then we have the chimney.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, selectmen, continue.
It, it doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever to repair a chimney for twenty-five thousand dollars when we have quotes from twenty-seven thousand, around twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars for a new boil, boiler. So I would recommend that we take the chimney repair off because we repaired the chimney for twenty-seven, twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the boiler, which is nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-six, something, somewhere around there. And then suddenly that goes bad. Now in a couple of years, we're repairing a boiler, which for is about another twenty-seven thousand. Maybe the prices go up, so round it out about thirty thousand. Now we've put in fifty-some odd thousand dollars and now we don't, we don't even need a chimney. So I would recommend that we just focus on the boiler.
I, I'm in agreement.
I'm, I'm in agreement. Well, I think that's consensus. Mr. Paul, is that his consensus?
I'm consensus.
Big consensus?
Yep.
So that being the case, you have.
So now we need to narrow it down.
You have Can Man, you have, um, Lakes Region Heating and Cooling and you have, um, Energy Unlimited, which is the one that came in last and I, I did, um, talk to Kevin about the proposals and, um, he was, um, I think more, more supportive of Energy Unlimited. Like the fact that the, they're talking about using Tako valves. They're actually talking about, I think he said two boilers. Um, so if one goes down, another one works. He just felt like that was the.
There's two, it's two boilers in the quote.
The best, the best proposal.
One of the things, um, I had the opportunity to go through, I was here when, uh, the Can Man HVAC and, um, he has to go upstairs and through the basement and everything and discovered that, um, the zones aren't broken up properly and that's why there's a lot of problems. And he says in here that he would break up, uh, replumb the downstairs heat to the other zones, giving out the hot and cold spots. So what was happening is, and he pointed it out, that, um, Tim and Gail are on one thermostat, but the thermostat or their heat is actually in the hall that's heated by another thermostat. So if the heat comes on in the downstairs meeting room, it turns off the heat in Gail and Tim's room. Then, and then he, uh, checked through some other things and Jeannie's room was plumbed different. And, uh, your thermostat is off by eight degrees. So if you have to, um, heat it to seventy, you'd have to, uh, turn the thermostat up to, I think it was like eighty-two or something, uh, or seventy-eight. So there's a lot of other problems with the heating system that he included in there to, to, to fix. And, yeah, they all have, talk of multi-thing, uh, multi-zone, controllers and the zone pumps, because each one would have a different. I mean, each zone would have its own pump. So that was the thing, it, it's that we could put another boiler in, but I think resolving the heating issues that we're having down there is important and making it so that what you'd end up is in your office, that thermostat would control your room and you can turn whatever you want to, whatever temperature you want. And then Tim and Gail would be that and then the other.
I think that would be, um, I, I don't get the sense that that's not what this, I mean.
Well, he just says the distribution there in the circuit plane for the heating zones, but it's, um, he's got to connect up to that. Doesn't say anything about changing the, um.
Yeah, I, and I, and I am not an expert in any of this. That's why I had Kevin look at it. That's what Kevin recommended. So, but.
Yeah. I, I just, I'm, I'm very knowledgeable on heating systems and I just, I think it's real important. You can put whatever you want for boiler in there and in the boiler room, but the problem that we're running into and this one pointed out is we have half-inch pipes going to three-quarter and then back to half-inch. Some of them are held up with, um, rope from the ceiling. And, and that was the thing.
And I think, I mean, that, yeah, that, there's definitely been retrofits along the way. If some, if something's, whether it's this guy or the other, or the, one of the others.
Guys, talk into the mic, please. Mr. Chair?
Yes, selectmen, Constantino.
If John's finished?
Yes.
I think that, um, if we asked them to quote two, two boilers, we should have at least asked Handman to quote two boilers. We asked them to replace the boiler that was existing there. And this gentleman came back with two boilers, two one-fifty, hundred and fifty, one thousand BTUs with two boilers. And it doesn't say where he's going to put these two boilers, whether they're side by side or not, but, um, it's not what we asked for, for the bid. That, that would be my first thing. Second of all, if, if I, I wasn't, obviously wasn't present when you did the walk-around with, with any of them, but it's, uh, we should at least, it's, looks like it's down to, um, Can Man and Lakes Region. I'm sorry, Energy Unlimited, is it Energy Unlimited? Yes. That's the one Eric just sent over to me. Because the other one's way out of, priced way out of range. So, um.
Maybe.
I, I know that Kevin recommends it, but I don't think he went on the walkthrough either. So, um, we either go back to Can Man and ask him to, to, uh, bid exactly what you're asking Energy Unlimited to bid or so that we have apples to apples, because this is what we have all the time with, with, uh, bids. It's not fear to one or the other and then we make a motion. Uh, otherwise I tend to make a motion for the lowest bid and, and, and go with that. Because we're down to the wire. This is our last meeting.
Mr. Fire.
Both of these companies came here, right? The both of these companies looked at what needs to be replaced and they've given their expertise on what they think should be replaced. So one says it need, they can do it with two and one says they can do it with one. That's their expert opinion.
That's not so, Eric.
They both came here.
Yes, but John gave them very specific instructions that we wanted to replace our boiler with another boiler of the same capacity, the same BTU, the same. So it was replace it for that. This is what it was. It wasn't his recommendation on what he felt for the boiler. So that, so that statement is not correct.
Well, so I read it, here's, here's how I'm reading it, um, selectmen, Constantino and the other select board members. Is, um, Can Man has put a bid out that has one boiler that is at two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand BTUs. Energy Unlimited has two boilers. Each one is a hundred and fifty-one thousand BTUs. When you add it together, it's three-hundred-and-two thousand BTUs. So when you look at the equivalent amount of BTUs, where it's right in the same ballpark in terms of BTU output. I think that the explanation from Energy Unlimited is, is you have, if you have one goes down, the other one can still operate. So you're not completely out of the ability to have heating while they're repairing the other one. That's just my read. So in terms of BTU output, you're looking at, it's, it's just three thousand BTU.
It's not, may I? It's not a, it's, let's go back to the principle of the thing. It's about the bids. Two people came to, to bid on something and they got two different specs to bid on. That's what it's about. Allow the people to bid on what they're supposed to be bidding on and let them come up with the bids. That's what they should be bidding on.
Mr. Miss, Mr. Scanlon.
My biggest concern is, yes, we can put a heating system in one, I might say, like this. One or put two of these for that. We're gonna end up with a heating system that works. Problem is, is that the heating system, the urgent, connected up and not resolved the heating issues at the same time, which is plumbing in the rest of the building in the downstairs. That is the thing is to find out, um, is, is that going to be resolved? Because that's, we've been dealing with that for, I, I, I know at least eight, ten years.
So, um, they, they didn't, there was no, um, there was no RFP or any bid requirement, because if you were called, we were going down one road with the chimney. And at, at the last meeting, the board asked me to then go out and get bids for, um, the boiler. Not, not saying that's not, that was a bad idea. I think it was a good idea, but it happened at the last minute. And so if you remember, I, that very next day, I started making calls, not even sure if I was gonna get anyone. You, Pat, you sent me Can Man. Kevin gave me, um, his recommendation as somebody and, um, I had made two other calls and got, um, a response from Lakes Region. I guess what my recommendation, because again, I'm not an expert at this. Maybe it's bringing them back and having them both speak with Kevin. John, if you want to be there, if you could be there, fine. Um, and, and have the conversation so you're comfortable. It's gonna have to happen next week, early next week and you'll have to, you know, either have a special meeting or at the open house. Do it then. But, um, other, other, other than that, I say pick who you pick and I, I can't. All I can tell you is what, what you're saying and then what Kevin's saying.
Well, I'm in.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
The thing I want to make sure is that when we're done, that, that we have something that works really good and not still playing the thermostat stuff, because that, that's been going on forever. I feel bad for you guys, because I found out that one thermostat isn't even in the room that controls, no wonder why, you know.
Doesn't, doesn't matter. I, I got a wall of heat behind me. I have no problem with heat in my office.
So you'll have, I mean, at this point, after. So you'll have, I mean, at this point, after that, you'll have that.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I would also like to see on here is that they install the thermostats, the program thermostat, so we can set it back on weekends. And, you know, night to midnight and like 5:00 AM, so it has time to warm up. So, you know, for energy efficiency and, and getting it back, because I think bottom line is that we want good heat, so use a comfortable, energy efficiency. And I'll just, let's get done, because I think like Pat said, it was like weeks. And we all agree, suppose it's been my own chimney.
Yeah.
Take care of this thing at once.
I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement.
So do we want to? I mean, we can make a motion for one, or we can say, let's try and get it back going and then. You know, I'd like to be there and find out if, what they're going to do and I can make myself available. And I don't know either of these people, so. I, except for this one, I was present at, and I wasn't present at this, so. Yeah. I know I've been dealing with the thermostat issues. As long before you were here, I suggested that we change the thermostats and lock them and and I almost got my head torn off. I never spoke of a thermostat again in town hall. And now I'd like to have somebody professional, now that I realize it wasn't me, it was the thermostat.
So what would you like to do?
I don't know. I'm not an expert in the area, so I'm.
Okay. And I can, I can see if I can get them both to come back and meet with Kevin and John. So they can ask questions and try to get that done before next.
Thursday.
Next Thursday's meeting and if the meeting's got to be posted anyway, it's an open house, but if you have to do a little business, that's fine. Or Tuesday.
We could always, we could always post the meeting for regular 4:45 start time. And then 5 o'clock's the open house. We could do 15 minutes of boiler debate. That's okay.
It's good. Hour boiler debate.
Well, guess what? We've got 15 minutes to make the decision next week. And so if they get in and they're there with John and Kevin and then a recommendation comes out. And we go. So we've got 15 minutes before people come to eat the cookies. We don't want to keep people back from their cookies. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with table and having both contractors come in and meet with Kevin and John and then come back next Thursday, 4:45 and we can solve, we can make a decision then. Is that everyone else agree?
The contractors in just before the meeting?
No, they'll come, they would come in next, we would arrange for them to come in next week to be able to do the work and then discuss with John and Kevin, present for both contractors, so that we, you know, so that it's, we've got all bases covered. And then, then at 4:45 next week, 15 minutes before our, our public meeting, yeah, open house cookie tasting, we can just make the decision on, on which contractor to go with the boiler.
Keep in mind, it's their busiest time of the year, too.
So is that?
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Yes, I would just have them be able to come in and meet with the DPW director and Selectman Scanlon, who has obviously got expertise in this area. Pat, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay.
One item I sent you at the, I think, last minute via email was one of the other recommendations from the Town Hall assessment. Is that there should be lighting out of the street, out of the school street doors, the double foot doors. And I did get a quote from a JP Carter to do that. I forwarded that quote to all of you. Didn't know if you want to approve that.
Yes, I would, in reading it, yes, for the, I personally, I would like to approve it for the lighting out there.
Peruse and through it.
Was that a motion that you made, Scott?
It was not.
I'm just having a hard time picturing if these are like, you know, spotlights or what, because it'd be nice to have something that's a little architecturally pleasing for, if it's going to be on a building of this age or. If EverSource would put a light on the pole, light up the street through there, because if that whole areas, this whole strip of the building out here is dark. Just coming around the corner and out back there. I know EverSource or electric company will put a pole light on or something like that. I just didn't, I'm, I'm not real keen on taking an 1850s building, put a couple floodlights on it.
Could delay the process because that's not EverSource's pole, it's consolidated.
It is consolidated.
Consolidated, so you might.
Do they own it?
Consolidated.
Yes, consolidated on that pole.
They all look the same to me.
Agreed.
Just in the process, we learned.
I just, you know.
Well, I do, I do want to point out that you do, you do know that there's going to be coming with the boiler, that you're going to have stuff coming out the back of the building. You do know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not going to be architectural.
No, it's not.
It's going to be two PVC, it's going to be white PVC, maybe green, unless you want to paint it.
Yeah, and that's in the alley and that, and it's. But, you know, it's all disguised as opposed to some bright lights. And just not for putting spotlights like that, especially not knowing what they're going to look like.
I think it's a safety issue.
I think safety plays aesthetics.
I, I will, I will agree on that one. Yeah, I think, I mean. It's, and when you go by there, I mean, it's dark, it's dark in that alleyway and it's dark out here when we leave at night, too. So. I, I hate to be so pretty, and maybe it's asking for the fixture to be a darker color and not white. So I'm sure that, I'm sure that there's choices of black and white. Yeah, we could do, and even if they can just send a picture over of a couple of options. I think in terms of a safety piece, and as we all know, especially when the sun goes down at 4:15 and we've still got employees who are here, it's dark out there.
It doesn't say color, it just says two LED.
Yeah, two LED floodlights.
Still two lights.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of having, I'm in favor of having the lights installed.
I'm in, in favor, but it seems a little vague for whoever again.
Or you get two lights.
I can have them send over pictures.
Yeah, so, you know, is the conduit girdy through the building or is girdy up the side of the building?
I doubt it's girdy up the side of the building.
That's on it. It just seems a little vague. And I'd like to see something that, you know, looks nice as opposed to. You know.
It says, it says the conduit will come from the AC disconnects to the corner of the building. Higher than the cameras in order not to impede any light or disturb the camera picture.
We will pull power from the AC circuit and fuse it to the appropriate size to handle the two lighting loads.
And then it's going to be, it's going to be, they're going to have a photo, photovoltaic eye controlled so it comes on at dusk.
So be.
And off at dawn.
That won't be exposed conduit on the outside of the building.
Don't, I, I, I don't know.
We'll install a conduit from the AC disconnects to the corner of the building, higher than what Scott just said.
Yeah, higher than the cameras that are up there.
So there will be conduit up there.
That's what I was thinking, maybe if, you know, get the electric company, put one on the pole, like the whole street up there. And that whole section, because you'll be laying there and just shining lights, you could point it up towards the parking lot and you have cars coming down. I'd just like to have it done right.
Can you put the conduit on the inside going out? Where does the conduit have to go?
It's the, the quote is, is that they'll do conduit from AC disconnects to the corner of the building and they'll be higher than the cameras in order not to impede any light or disturb the camera picture.
I'm with John. I don't want to have conduit all over the side of the building, especially the front of Town Hall.
This is, this is, this is the bad.
The side, yeah. I'm sorry, the side.
Right now, the ramp, it's got like a yellow spotlight on it. And if we could get a post or something on that pole and just light up the whole section of the street. That would light up the alley and be safe for all the way from corner all the way up to parking lot.
I guess we'll table it.
Have gone over my action items. Won't go over the FYI. I just wanted to also thank Terry Smith and the students from the total school. They started working on the barricade. I think the weather at this point, the rest is going to have to be done in spring. I would appreciate and actually had people come in complimenting the painted barricade. So I want to thank them for doing that in this cold weather and getting it done. Walmart employees helped plant bulbs on Friday a couple of weeks ago. Cold and I was very appreciative of their help doing that. Thank you. And the only other item I have is to ask the Selectman what, if there are any thoughts about tomorrow or with the weather or how you want to handle if the building's going to be closed, how you want to handle that.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yeah, in the past, if we had done, the chairman would check very early in the morning on the weather and we gave them the permission to call the meeting, I mean, call Town Hall. Work and was like prior. It was prior to 6:00 AM, I think. We had, we had a time, I think Pat probably remembers, because I remember being chairman getting up early and making the decision, because a couple of times we called it off and then it turned out that was two degrees warmer and it rained the whole day. So we, that's when we started doing it early, early in the morning. And of course, any employee can, they don't have to show up on days like that if they don't want to.
The problem, the problem is, is that we have to have at least two people to build themselves.
Yeah, I'm going to say. You got 273 things in New Hampshire that are already canceled for tomorrow.
I haven't seen that.
They may wake up to rain, pouring rain, and they get a nice rainy day out, wash all the salt off your car. What, what is going to be a remote learning day?
So how many employees is it, just, it's Town Hall?
Right close, please.
Well, I mean, you have to remember that when it's going to be a remote learning day, I mean, people aren't going. The teachers don't have to go in because they can do the most, or whatever they're using for their classroom.
I think we always just give to chairman to. Yes, the chairman.
I remember one day last, when I was chair.
Well, you got to keep in mind the distance that the people come, come to Town Hall and that we also want to keep the municipal parking areas free so that we can do the parking for them. Keep it clear as well and be safe, because they're not going to be able, they're going to be out there doing the roads and they're not necessarily going to be concentrating on ramps and, and stairs as well.
And we've, and the police chief and DPW director have issued the emergency parking ban through Saturday noon.
Right. The other thing is. Go, sorry.
To me, that, to me, that would indicate that they're pretty sure that this is going to be potentially significantly affect the road condition. So I would lean toward having Town Hall closed. And if you guys are in a book of this, you know. Here's, here's the whole thing.
It's good to call, mother.
Yeah, well, here, here's the whole thing. You're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. It doesn't make it a difference.
It's hard on you.
It's like school district superintendents, like, like, you know, they'll call it and there'll be a dust of snow.
Especially this.
Yeah, they'll bring the kids in and it'll snow two inches an hour for the first three hours and then they've got to do a half day, so. You're damned if you do, damned if you don't. I would, I would like to.
To the chairman.
Yeah, I would like, if, if the chairman's going to have.
Can I say something to that?
Absolutely.
When we, when we've, when we've included Town Hall employees, Lisa has always been included in that. So in the past. Lisa Oger. Because she's administration and not, not an essential employee. She's always been included in Town Hall enclosures.
We can do Town Hall employees and, and non-essential employees with the other departments would get covered. So is it on me?
Is that Kate? How's it run?
Good luck, Mr. Ruggles.
Thanks. So, yeah, so yes, the chairman is making a decision.
Have a brownie, think about it.
Yeah, you win a brownie.
That makes you get a brownie.
It's not the right kind of brownie to make that decision.
Yes, it's absolutely the chair.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Constantino. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so Town Administrator Forster, Forster, let's have Town Hall be closed tomorrow and the non-essential administrative employees and any other departments should also exercise caution. So I believe we were thinking the PD. Lisa. Does that get, does that get your question answered? And I'm ready for the heat.
She's already sent out the email. She just hit send. She already had it ready.
I have to walk up the hill to work tomorrow. We are not closing, so. I have to walk up the hill to work tomorrow, we are not closing, so.
Your last day tomorrow.
It is, and we have the campuses. Okay, so good. Anything else, Mrs. Forester? Well, good, anything else, any other new business from the select board?
Uh, are we at five or five-thirty next week for the cookie thing?
Well, wait a minute, are we gonna do four forty, four forty-five for the boiler debate? Okay, so we'll start at four forty-five, Selectman Constantino, to discuss the boiler again, and then five o'clock is for the cookie taste.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your patience.
Oh, not a problem.
Um, do, one. Good effect, but would you be interested in having the, all the thermostats, we have nineteen sixty-six thermostats. What the program will.
I, I think whatever they, I think whatever they do, I thought.
Cause as it is now, it's manual.
Yeah.
And they, they could be adjusted manually, but they would have a setback.
You would know better than I would, I remember for one of the courts, they talked about installing the control, zone control panel, so I don't.
So that's a little bit different.
Okay, okay, so.
Thermostat itself.
I think if they, here's my take, I think if the folks coming in, the professionals judge that, it's important to have the thermostats up to.
I think option, the option, you can set the thermostats back on, let's say, a schedule on, like, from. Ten o'clock till five o'clock, you know, set it back a few. And then on the weekends, you know, set it back, you know, five, ten degrees or something.
I think whatever would give us the most energy efficiency and keep us, their costs the cheapest.
So I'll ask them.
I think we can ask if that's an add-on.
The slow thing, right?
Yeah, oh, I'm, I'm understanding it, yes, though I lived with a New England father who liked to control the thermostats, so.
That's it. I think I got mine yet.
You're, you're nominated as Mr. Jessman this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night. Feel better. Yes, of course, I parked over there specifically today. I was actually surprised, because I pulled up, there were two empty spaces right outside town hall, and I thought either A, G, and six.